It's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Leonard Village Council. Today is March fourteenth of 2022. I want to welcome everybody out on this semi-warm, semi-spring day, almost spring day. Twenty-first is solstice, so we got that to look forward to.
Yay! I heard of the dark.
Okay, can we have everybody stand for the flag and do this? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Briefly, a short implication to ask the powers that be at our lord to look over us as we make our decisions and counsel on the matters that come before us tonight. Thank you. Okay, we have a roll call for members of the council present, please.
This is Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Mr. Kennedy.
Present.
Mrs. Erindale. Mrs. Swack. Mr. Hawkins.
Here.
Okay, we have a forum and we'll mark, I don't know about, I assume Mrs. Swack would be here, but can Mrs. Erindale excuse if she'd like to sing a dance? And then note for the record that both Clerk Laurie Zelenak and Treasurer Judy Vurs are present. Okay, council has before it the minutes of the regular meeting of February fourteenth. Are there any questions, changes, corrections? Given motion to approve will be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Very much. Thank you. We have a motion by trustee Kennedy and a second by trustee Hawkins. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, please say no. Okay, motion in the minutes are approved. Okay, council has before it a proposed agenda. With the council's indulgence, I'd like to add one more item under new business, that being a resolution on administrative assistants for the village. Are there any other edits, additions? If none, motion approve the agenda as amended will be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that. There's been a motion by Kennedy, seconded by McDonald, to approve the agenda as amended. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, please say no. Okay, the agenda is approved as amended. Next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report for February of 2022. Judy, I know this one you saved on the, unless I got the wrong one, they say February of 2021, March 2021?
I think it's February, what is your state? I think it's February twenty-two.
Yeah, it's just February twenty-two.
Either way, I will have the right one, so are there any questions, changes, or corrections to it? If none, a motion to
Here's the hand.
To receive the file of treasurer's report will be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to receive the file of treasurer's report.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by trustee Kennedy, seconded by trustee Hawkins, to approve the treasurer's report. Do we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. All right, next item on the agenda, are the accounts payable and the amounts shown. Are there any questions on the accounts payable? If none, motion to approve payment of those accounts will be in order.
Uh, the accounts payable for February twenty-two.
Yeah.
I'd like to make the motion to pay the bills in the amount of $20,156.86 out of the general, $5,368.53 per major, $4,492.72 per local, and zero for mill park recreation.
I'll make the second on that motion. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call to pay the bills, please, for February?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Paid bills. Okay, next item on the agenda are budget amendments for the previous annual fiscal year of the village, which was March first of 2020 to 2021 to February twenty-eighth of 2022. In the general fund, we're looking to increase trustees' wages by $40, legal costs by $2,676, streetlights by $640, road maintenance by $56, and the annex $260. So council staff will increase administrative assistant category by $150, reduce the auditor by $600, reduce clerk's office expenses by $675, reduce dues and seminars by $150, reduce zoning and survey category $241, reduce the planning commission $900, and reduce general labor $956, for a total of $3,672. This leaves the, leaves and keeps the original budget balanced as required by law, and that final total would be $289,303.85. Now, in the major fund, we'll need to increase miscellaneous by $125, the blinker by $9. Blinker would be the blinking light of four corners. Blacktop repairs by $358, making a total of $492. To pay for that, we're gonna decrease signs by $125, pavement marking by $9, sidewalks by $358, making for a total of $492. These adjustments don't change the original budget total for the major fund, which was So when council approves this amendment, that would basically close our previous budget, and we will be into, fully into the current fiscal year.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year.
I'll support that.
Okay, motion by trustee Kennedy, seconded by trustee Hawkins, to approve the budget amendments as presented. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, a vote for approval, please?
Sure. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, the amendments were cast and adopted. Okay, at this time, it's an opportunity for the public to address the village council on any matter they may have desire to speak to us about. If you do, if you are here for a particular item that is already on the agenda, you will have an opportunity to speak to that. We asked that you make your comments brief and to the point. You have adopted a rule for three minutes for addressing the council. So with that, who would like to speak up?
Yes. This is, do you guys have any copies of the minutes up there? None of us got a copy of the minutes.
Okay.
No, there's no minutes. I checked hers, too.
Yeah, I need to print them off upstairs.
I just wanted to read the minutes.
Yeah, I can get some to you.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll give you one.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
No, it's not okay.
Anybody else care to, if anybody else cared to address the village council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to new business. We received a chloride bid from road maintenance, as is the normal process this time of year. They are offering dust control for the village roads for the 2022 season. It's eight cents per foot per application for the village dirt roads, and $50 per application for the Pollyant parking lot. Upon a request from the DPW, chloride truck will follow greater. This price includes shoulders and halves. Okay, inasmuch as the cost is generally a little higher, they have the road commission do that, we generally go with road maintenance. So I'm recommending that we accept their bid for providing chloride for the village.
Is that, how many times? Once, twice?
No, we budget it twice, and if we need three or spot treatment.
We've done pretty good last year.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vote for road chloriding from road maintenance board.
I'll support that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Kennedy, seconded by trustee Hawkins, to approve the bid at eight cents per foot per application and $50 per application for the Pollyant Trail parking lot. Are there any questions on the motion? Yes.
If you have a private road and we'd like to pay to be part of that, is that a possibility?
Yeah.
So it would be like eight cents a foot? Is it a linear foot, or is it square foot, or?
It's linear, but I believe, now I don't know if on a private road, if they just go down the middle of it, that's considered one pass. If they had to come back on a wider road, it would be two passes, so.
How would we go about finding out how much that would cost?
Basically, you could con-
If you wanted to be included in the middle of it?
Yeah. I don't think that would be a problem, except it would require coordination between whoever's going, like, whomever's going to pay them for the job.
They could probably bill them separately.
Yeah, the thing is, is that you'd have to have preapproval from all of the people, you know, on the road.
Well, if it's paid, do they really have to approve? I guess, maybe, I don't know.
No, well, no.
The bill is paid, but-
But some people don't like chloride in front of their houses.
Okay.
We've run into that.
Yeah. When's your first application?
Oh, soon as things dry out, probably.
Usually May, isn't it?
So I have a week or two weeks to get together with the people?
Right, right, and honestly.
Because three, three people do want it already, so I just have to get the approval from the other residents.
Right, here's the thing, you don't have to do it with us, but I will, I will contact them to see if the rate will, if they'll give the same rate for our private roads as well as our public.
Okay, because they're out here, and it's convenient, and-
Right. Now, you do understand that usually they grade, you usually apply chloride after the road's been graded.
We have a grader who grades our road.
Okay, well, then you should know, sorry.
For once in a while today, you can get it graded.
Right. Okay, it's gonna require a little coordination. Would you be the person handling this?
Probably yes.
Okay, okay, so let me make a couple phone calls next, and I'll get back. Okay, I've lost place.
Do we have Mr. Kennedy for the first, or the second? We just didn't get an all-in favor, or either roll call of that.
Yeah, yeah, we do, it's an expenditure, so.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And I'll get back in touch.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Okay, the next item under new business is the amended, amendment item from the agenda. And basically, the village, the village administrative assistant, who has traditionally, of late, has been our, also has been our treasurer, and now we also have an opportunity for our clerk to fill in as needed for that same position. So the state now requires the village to adopt a resolution authorizing the village treasurer and clerk to perform with compensation additional services for the village as an administrative assistant. So at this meeting, the preamble and resolution will be offered by one of the trustees and supported by the rest of the council. But I'll read it, because not everybody's had a chance to digest it. It's pretty straightforward. Whereas section three, paren- parentheses, parentheses C of the Incompatible Public Offices Act, Act 566 of 1978, provides that the governing body of a municipality having a population of less than 40,000 may authorize a public officer or public employee to perform with or without compensation other additional services for the municipality. And whereas the village of Leonard is a municipality with a population of less than 40,000, and as such, the village council may authorize public officers and public employees to perform with compensation other additional services for the village. And whereas Judy Vurs is a public officer for the village of Leonard, presently serving as treasurer for the village, and whereas Laurie Zelenak is a public officer for the village of Leonard, presently serving as clerk for the village, and whereas the village council has determined that it is necessary, appropriate, and efficient to have Judy Vurs perform with compensation additional services for the village as an administrative assistant, and whereas the village council has determined that it is necessary, appropriate, and efficient to have Laurie Zelenak perform with compensation additional services for the village as an administrative assistant in Judy Vurs's absence. Now therefore, it is resolved that the council hereby authorizes Judy Vurs, treasurer of the village of Leonard, to perform with compensation additional services for the village as an administrative assistant. The council further authorizes Laurie Zelenak, clerk for the village of Leonard, to perform with compensation additional services for the village as an administrative assistant in Judy Vurs's absence. So upon a roll call vote for adoption, this resolution would be adopted. So I'm gonna offer council first opportunity, is there any questions on this? Anybody else have any questions? Okay, then I'm looking for a resolution to the motion to approve it and the second. I'll make a motion, and I'll make a motion to offer this resolution for approval.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Kennedy. Okay, I'll now ask for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay, note for the record that there were no nays and two abs. Okay, this resolution is therefore adopted. All right, thank you very much. Moving on now to old business. Sewer, I want to give the council a sewer update. There haven't been any meetings or any further progress, and actually, I've asked the engineers to basically put this on hold as I'm working with them on the infrastructure grant that we're applying for before the end of this month from the county. And also, I'm getting direction from the treasury office about the American Rescue Plan money, and if we can use that money for that use as well. So that's why there hasn't been any further meetings or progress at this time. That should only take a little while longer, the end of March, I should have that all mapped out. The other item under old business is East Elmwood Street drain at Leonard Elementary. Some of you may be familiar, we had a problem last fall with drainage, or actually, it's been longer than last fall, but it's a yearly occasion where we have water, doesn't drain away fast enough from the school driveway, and we're looking for a way to fix that. As part of that, we had a power rod truck come out, it wasn't a vacuum truck, it was just a high-pressure power rod truck come out, and they were able to clear one of our drains on Division Street, but when we went down to the elementary school, we were unable to open an outlet either to the west or to the south. So the plan now is, is for when we get some drier weather, and we can pump the catch basins, we'll have one of the large tractor trucks come in and clean out the catch basins, and also try to power rod to open up that problem. And then we'll know for sure what action, if any, we will have to take further for that matter. So there's no action required on that, I just wanted to update everybody.
I have a question, the one on Division, is that right there by Baysa?
No, it was up by Forest, by Stainsons. That one's frozen already, far as I know.
Well, it's all huge puddle right now.
Yeah. Ground's frozen. Okay, at this time, normally, we would move into closed session for, for discussion, a council discussion regarding Michigan marijuana laws, we have attorney opinions to review. But what's the pleasure of the council, do we want to finish the rest of the agenda since we have so many people here? Or do we want to go into closed session and then?
Honestly, with half the other trustees here, I'd almost have the table possible.
Okay. No, we can do that.
The thing, they have a strong connection with me that I do, so I'd like to, they were a subset, so I'd like the table possible.
Let's, have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table the closed meeting until the, what's that, April meeting?
Thank you, John. Seconded by trustee Hawkins. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of tabling the closed meeting until the April meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, please say no. Okay, motion carries to table. All right, moving on then on the agenda, there is no BPW update. We have plenty of salt still in the bar, I don't know if we'll have to buy any more, not sure how much we've bought so far, we're committed to, I believe, 100 tons, aren't we, Judy?
I think it was 80 tons or up to 100.
Okay.
Yeah, we hit that.
Yeah, so we might want to go get the rest of it, because we're gonna end up paying for it anyways, so.
How was, how are we doing with the coal patch?
We've put down three tons, and we can put down more down.
Wow, really?
That stuff's really heavy, I mean, three tons is, you know.
There's some huge ones though, especially out that way.
Yeah, well, it's gonna, we're gonna be chasing them now, especially on Forest Street, because it's breaking up bad, and we really, we have to make it probably four more years in order to pay off the
Original.
The original.
It's time to redo it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Michigan roads.
Okay, moving on then, I'm not aware of any FOIA requests, we've had no applications for black grain assistance, and there's no active ordinance enforcement going on at this time. I think that pretty much covers everything. Probably be out chasing storm grades, too, here shortly. Moving on then to the trustee committee reports, summer festival committee. There, I just reflexively always look at you, Phil. I learned today that they are, and I think Laurie can confirm, it sounds like the fire department is in, they're gonna do Sundays, which, which is fantastic.
Yeah.
That's just, makes, makes, makes the year. And then cable commission, they canceled-
Hold it, hold it, bang up.
Well, no, it's my turn to talk.
The grade, I heard it's in the afternoon.
Four o'clock. We'll see.
That's crazy to me, that day.
It's not a good idea.
I don't think so either, but there are those that think it is.
The regular meeting of the cable commission was canceled, and they're, I think they're planning on rescheduling a special meeting, but if not, it'll be the regular meeting in March. Decorating committee, Jennifer's not here, so I don't know. North Oakland Transportation Authority, we have a meeting Wednesday. There's a lot going on, but as always, we're looking to get new vehicles and keep the service going, so we've had some good success with some new grants as well, so that's a good time.
Question?
Yes.
When you give a newsletter for Leonard, can we put in, like, who can ride for NOTA and what the requirements are for people who need NOTA?
Yeah, their website's, it's a very good website.
Okay.
It has all that, and also, you do have to register, if you want to use the service, you have to give them your information, but I think it's a buck, it's a buck each way.
Please.
Well, right now, I don't think there is a charge. We dropped the charge during COVID, so the drivers didn't have to handle-
Would it, would it make sense that NOTA wants to have some kind of order in our next update, maybe we gotta send it, they wanna have us pass something, that way we're not responsible for writing it, they get the information passed up, that they wanna?
Or is it not, is it a site to NOTA, on our website?
I can add it, I don't think that there is a link to it.
No, you're right, I don't think there is, see, that's a good idea.
It's like a resource for the community, and people don't know where to get that information sometimes.
Is there a festival link on our site?
I believe that there is a link to the
I have been adding in a while, so.
If you go on and it's broken, just yell at me.
Okay.
Don't yell too loud, God, this does too much for us, I don't want them to.
We don't want him running out.
Yeah.
He's got this.
Planning commission, we have business for them this, this month, so- so that's gonna be scheduled this month.
Same kind of stay.
Right. It's a kind of one.
Yeah.
Right, we'll try and make it quick.
Okay, um, Pollyant Trail, it was meeting this Wednesday. Uh, there's a can and bottle drive going on right now. If you wanna, uh, donate to the trail, and the trail and Oxford Addison Youth Assistance are splitting it 50/50, um, so they're doing real good so far, so that's awesome.
Where are the engine valves?
Uh, the old Oxford Fire Station behind the Oxford Village offices, there's a placard there, back by the door, so. I was there, I was dropping bottles off yes, the day before yesterday, it was yesterday, and, um, it was quite a few days. Some did, some of them were getting a lot.
Yeah, we've, we've done really well. We have over 15,000, $1,500 right now.
Wow, that's, that's been a good one.
And it runs until the end of the month.
The end of the month.
So there's still plenty of time.
If you wanna donate, we'll take all your St. Patrick's Day, you can give your own. That's more soda bottles.
Well, I think that was part of the plan, was to cover, to make, uh, to include, uh, the St. Patrick's house, so. Okay, um, village park, um, we don't have a committee meeting scheduled that I'm aware of, but I am in the process of, uh, writing a grant application to the AARP, which is, uh, gives grants to local communities for parks and projects and stuff like that, so. And council has received its, uh, Community Development Black Grant Report, and I think, uh, it doesn't reflect the latest, the latest expense, which is, um, on our balance, yeah, our balance shows it's $5,000, so there's a little less than that available. And then, um, that's, that's finishes my report, report. As far as correspondence goes, we received an annual notification from the Seventh Day Adventist that they will be in the village, uh, knocking on doors.
Oh, really?
They do it every year.
But it's something you go about COVID.
Right, or what day, you know?
They don't say.
You have to live, you have to watch people from, from May till October, November, and it's Friday.
They give themselves-
Ten till nine, and now.
Really?
Well, it's later, you know, it stays late, late, so. Okay, I have a further business, uh, for the council, or anything. Oh, you know, let me, one more thing. Um, we did get the, uh, estimated distributions for the revenue sharing, and our budget, um, is pretty, is, we went, we estimated low. We are gonna have to pay back about $5,000 from the two, the two, you know, our population technically is at 377. We were paid at 403, so the difference for, uh, for the years 2021 and 2020, well, I guess 2020 and 2021 will have to be paid back. So, we have to pay them back 5,000, but we'll-
Really?
But, yeah, but we'll, um, our, our amount, uh, the amount we're gonna get is slightly over 30,000, uh, which is what we had on our, um, our budget, so we should have got, uh, 33,711 is what they're saying we should get this year. Um, the governor's budget includes, uh, extra money for that category, but that would have to get passed by the legislature before we could actually count on it.
But she's talking about cutting gas taxes.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean. There's no telling whether any of this will, you know, come through, so. And that's all I have. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.